Beginning really. And is that you may have noticed, councillors, that it's a bit of a heavy agenda this evening. And so I just wanted to kind of put a reminder out there, if you can keep your answers short and sweet, that would be amazing. If I feel that time is an issue, I won't come back to you for a second comment on an item generally. So just wanted to put that out there before we start. Um, okay, still trying to get my papers out. Okay. Right, first as well, before we kick things off, I just want to say a warm welcome to Ethan, our new councillor for Stratton. And then I will crack on. And we are streaming and recording, just to let you know. So first of all, we receive the acceptance apologies for absence.
Councillor Jamie Wright, Luke Quinton and Kelly Moriarty.
Okay. And any declarations of registered and non-registered, disposable community interest and non-registered interests?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Alex Alvedita.
Uh, mine's item twenty-four, I'll declare a withdrawal.
Yeah, thank you. And Peter.
Yeah, item twenty-four also, I'm a board member of the area tourist board, uh, which at this point stands to be one of the potential beneficiaries of the application.
Thank you.
It's a non-community interest.
Dispensations.
Yes, we do have a dispensation, which was, oh yes. Earlier, it's a, I mean, so which I have circulated from councillor Brode.
Yeah. Okay, nobody else?
Need to allow that, certainly. Oh, it's not it, we should allow them.
Okay. So those, we allow, okay.
It's to allow.
Allow, accept.
Requesting dispensation and it's to speak but not vote.
Speak but not vote, okay. Yeah. Yes. Okay. Okay. The minutes of full council to receive confirm and sign the minutes of council meeting held on the twenty-fourth of November. Those who received confirm and sign those. Thank you, those in favour. And the minutes of committees to receive a note, the minutes of committee meetings listed below. And so first of all, it's the planning committee on the ninth and twenty-third of November. Those who. Yep, all those in favour of this?
I just.
All those against and abstain. And the oversight committee on the, sorry, seventeenth of November. Thank you. Seven, I think, all those in favour? And all those against and abstain. Thank you. Okay. So on to the recommendations, please. Uh, so the first one, resolve to recommend to full council that events officer be allocated a budget of up to three and a half thousand pounds to organise an event to celebrate the King's coronation on Sunday, the seventh of May next year, twenty twenty-three.
I'll just clarify that, save budget out of reserves.
Okay. Okay. Is that sure? Yeah, I'd like to second that, so all those in favour of these of that one? Yeah, and all those against? And abstain. Sure. Yeah. Thank you. And the next one is to recommend to full council that the emergency plan take priority. The procurement policy come next with councillors taking the lead, starting at the environment forum, that the youth council needs a lead councillor to start this project. And that the TCRFO can be requested to write a paper giving the council more information regarding investment policy.
Would you like me to?
Yes, that'd be great, yeah, thank you.
Um, sorry, the residency, kind of that context from the oversight committee, because the oversight committee has been delegated a set of administrative projects to these four projects. So we were tasked with, um, just prioritising our own four projects in a sense. So these projects are not the, you know, the projects across the whole breadth of the council. They're four administrative projects that we discussed and we felt that the emergency planning one was the most important one that we should make a start on. Procurement project is really about just clarifying how many purchasing decisions we thought we should investigate, um, use of decision wheels, which is something we thought we could do in the climate change forum as a first instance. Um, we felt that the youth council was a, in effect, a, a kind of political project that needed a councillor lead. And as we didn't have anybody who was on the oversight committee, who was kind of a lead councillor for youth or who actually wanted to take that on, we felt we'd bring that back to the full council group. And the investment project, we were unsure where our investments currently stand. And so we asked for the town clerk's position saying.
Yes, Katie. Um, I would also add as well, like, we were thinking about in terms of, like, how much time and risk things were. Um, so how much time things would take, who would be doing it, um, and basically how we can unblock some of these as well. Um, and basically get things adjacently running as much as possible, um, so that everything felt like it was moving. So, and I felt really comfortable that we had that thorough discussion of being able to do that.
And we. So, yes.
Yeah, thanks. Then, just the youth council project seems quite interesting to me. Um, I've got some links with Stratton Primary School and we've invited some of the pupils to come along to a planning meeting. Um, unfortunately, the last planning meeting didn't quite work out, we're hoping to get them down either before Christmas or just after Christmas. But I don't feel I've got enough time to lead that, but I'd be very interested if anybody else would like to lead, that I would prop them up, um, and perhaps get something going. I'm looking at the end of the table to Mr Tilsey, councillor Tilsey.
One bitten, twice shy.
Would you be prepared to perhaps try and work with me and the school to get some sort of, or any other councillors might be interested, but I don't want to take it on myself.
Are you saying secondary, secondary school level or junior school or any, any level?
Both.
I'd be happy to put the toe in the water for secondary. But there's a councillor who runs a youth club who's not on, who's not here tonight, he might be quite keen.
Um, yes. Having spoken to him, he's actually not.
Okay, pardon.
I was hoping he wouldn't, as I was going to have to paraphrase what he said, but he isn't particularly keen on the idea of the youth council. How did he say it again? Because effectively you end up with the same people who run the school council, who have no connection to the kids that are lost, so to speak. They end up on the youth council here and the kids were trying to engage, just slipped away.
Okay.
And you went, so Jamie was not, he preferred the idea.
Peter, I will have a chat.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just in the interest of keeping it to the, um, to the recommendation for tonight.
Well, he was speaking to him, he did have some other ideas on how it could be done.
Well, they should be linked with the school.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, yes, good. Thank you. And so the recommendation, so does somebody want to propose?
Oh, is that?
Okay, so all those in favour of that recommendation? Thank you. And the last one then, to recommend to full council to adopt the oversight committee's terms of reference as presented with the competition being mayor and deputy mayor plus any other members up to a maximum of twelve voting and six non-voting.
Hello to me again, this is an oversight committee. Really, what we, what we tried to do here is sort of tidy up the oversight committee terms of reference and reflect more accurately what the committee's been doing. So when we first, when we first started out, I think there was a few loose ends. So we've added some things in like facilities manager reports and so on. We've also given the committee a role in reviewing policy changes. So we did that with the grants policy and that's coming forward to here. But removing from the committee the role about recommending annual budget and preset, because this was, you know, that was something that was undertook in the full council.
Yeah.
So hopefully it's nothing too controversial in the, in the terms of reference anyway.
Yeah, please. One second. Okay, all those in favour now? Thank you. Okay, on to correspondence received.
Um, there's been correspondence coming very recently about the referendum for, for Vera Cornwall and the council's already resolved on that matter. So just to say I will respond when that consultation comes out with the council. Clearly, if more information comes through, we can, we can, we can start up the council. And I have had some letters of support regarding the ride and ride service run by Holsworthy and the community transport and the fact that the town council doesn't directly fund them. And I've advised Holsworthy Community Transport about our grants process, so which they weren't aware of. So it's for them to apply with that process.
So, thank you. Yes, Katie?
Um, I think it's probably worth also bringing up here, um, the, obviously we keep getting correspondence about the bus, the bus service.
Sure, yes, I'll have some touch on that a bit in a minute.
Yeah, well, if you're gonna touch on it, that's great, but I would still probably have a bit of a shout out to think, is there any other solutions that we could be doing? Especially considering you just mentioned the community transporter as a town council. I mean, obviously we're fairly limited, but if anyone's got any ideas.
Yeah, well, I'll say, we've had a meeting today, so I was gonna mention about it. Yeah. That's me, I will keep it short. Um, it was, I was only gonna mention about the Neetside War Room session. Um, I did one of the, we kind of arranged and did some, you know, lots of people in there doing, doing the sessions, which is great. Really well organised, um, and what I've been, just, it's amazing to see the coordination between us and the Neetside and all the other venues and everything that's been going on. Like, big, big well done to everybody, really, it's been gold, it's been amazing. Um, today Peter and myself went over to see Holsworthy Town Council. Um, Peter had got in touch with them because of all the correspondence that we've had about the loss of the bus route. Um, we have had lots of contact, I know Katie sent me a load over that she's, she's seen as well. So we went over today and I don't know if Peter's gonna speak about it a bit, so I won't say too much. But yeah, it was a really, really good meeting. Um, Vanessa, the town clerk over in Holsworthy, um, very proactive, coming up with loads of ideas. Um, was, was I right in saying that, um, the gentleman there, Mr Devon County?
Devon County councillor for Holsworthy.
For Holsworthy, yeah. Um, and everybody was on the phone, you know, trying to sort out, um, I can't think of the name of the gentleman that he phoned, but he was exceptional, he called.
He, no, he was definitely a town council.
Yeah.
I've got it in my.
I should read it all down. Yeah. So we are basically gonna send all of the evidence that we have received locally. Vanessa is very kindly gonna coordinate all of that into one thing and send it to this gentleman that is dealing with the bus company and everything. Um, and we're gonna, we've requested that they meet with us in a couple of weeks' time and to talk through any solutions, any ideas that they've got, where improvements could be made. But they seem to very much acknowledge the problems. So, okay, that was me, I believe. Um, so Cornwall council's president, we just got you this evening, Peter. We've got Shaun hiding in the wings, have we? No.
Just me, thank you.
Sorry.
I'll keep it really, really quick. I've, I've been absolutely mad with work for the last two weeks, I haven't prepared a report, which I normally would do. So I just want to mention that I'm trying my best to keep on top of keeping pressure on the work that's going on with the canal um, in terms of the dredging, which I believe has begun on the very upper reaches and that'll find its way through to the lower, more visible reaches near to the town in the new year. Um, we're going in towards March and April as well. The embankment repairs just to the eastern side of, um, the Fountain Bridge. Uh, we've got some proposals from the engineers, which, uh, the own proposals are suggesting of sheep piling to actually contain the water, because land or the soil is very friable. And we think there's potentially got a lot of water being lost through the embankment at that point. Uh, but, but it'll be effectively hidden away, so you won't see it because it'll be grass over the top. And they'll also provide a launching platform for the activity users in that particular position, which will make it much more likely to last longer time. I've also been having ongoing conversations every week with the harbour master and the maritime manager about the management of the lock gates, the harbour and breakwater. And we're gonna talk again about that later, which we'll talk about in much more detail. But just to finish off what you were saying about the, uh, the bus service. Um, obviously it's not what we want, but the most pressing issue that we've been made aware of at the moment is children, or sorry, young students coming from Exeter College getting as far as O Camton and then not having a connecting bus. Back to you, that, that, that's the one that I'm really concerned about. Uh, and that's the one that we did speak about in some depth with Devon County Council, uh, because they subsidise Stagecoach, but not on this particular one, but they do have a, a much closer relationship with Stagecoach on that route than Cornwall council does. And that we are attempting to have the route classified as a through route, which means that one boss, one bus will have to wait until it's very clear the passengers can get off and onto the connecting bus. Uh, but in the, in the immediate future, we're interested in really making the focus on the returning bus from Exeter firstly. We'll do the rest if we possibly can. There were lots of other potential ideas going around the table, but I, I wish I had a really good solution that we could lobby hard for. I'm struggling to find it, which we all did in that same meeting. So anyway, that's all I want to say for the moment, but I'll happily take questions, which you can manage for me.
Yeah, there goes, we, we did touch on this sort of rural transport idea and the viability of using that kind of service, but it's, you know, gonna take a lot more information before we can, yes, Katie?
Yeah, is, um, in relation to that reclassification of the link, you mean actually turn it into a formal train link, I think they call it? Or is it just as a through service? Because I think, I mean, obviously ideally it's classed as a train link, because then timetables match correctly and it all gets displayed as, like, in the train station, the next to beyond, you see the connection to be there.
So, so in, in an ideal world, the six and six A would be defined as train link services.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
And also the six and six A separately would be a through service.
Yeah.
Okay, they're not at all at the minute, that's what we want to get sorted.
Yeah.
But that's the first step, but we think there may be other steps that we can do to improve the service as well.
Okay.
But one of them was actually very simple, telling the drivers, they've got a responsibility to make sure the kids get home safely. So, like, quite a simple one, really.
Thank you, Peter. Nobody else? Thank you. Um, okay, over to public participation. Would anybody like, yes, Mr Jennings?
Um, one of the councillors put a picture on Facebook, was it last week, about Crookness Beach Cafe?
I'm not sure, I haven't seen that one.
What was you saying, Neil? You put a thing on Facebook about the old Crookness Cafe about in the fifties? Was you, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, not nostalgic you, yeah, don't remember, yeah.
Keep up.
Yeah.
Well, when has you not ever gonna sort Crookness Beach out? I've been down there walking around last couple of days. I complained all year and, year and a bit ago. And it's worse now than it was then, you've done absolutely nothing about the place.
Well, which, which bridge?
Well, that, what about that bridge now? We've been, came across it. Well, who's responsible for the bridge then?
Cornwall council, I believe.
What, Crookness Beach?
I'll answer if you like.
Yeah, you're lucky to, thank you.
Right, so, so the bridge belongs to Cornwall council. Uh, I reported it in the day that it was seen as broken.
Right.
And they are busy making plans to probably replace the whole bridge.
Yeah.
But I've been asked separately by the Surf Life Saving Club that they might have some input into the design, because apparently they find it difficult to walk across the bridge with large surf craft. So that is ongoing and it will be, it will be repaired.
Right.
But these things don't happen overnight.
What about the, um, old beach officer? Where there's some rotten glass and bits of wood nailed over it, who's responsible for that?
Right, that, that is a separate issue which does have more relevance to this council. The beach office was devolved to the town council fairly recently. And the town council was in negotiation with a separate company for that company to take it on. And they've got backing and financial support to make it good, I believe.
That release has now been finalised.
Okay, so, so that will happen, but until, there was quite a long period getting the devolver from Cornwall council to this council. And then subsequent to that, you've got the period of time actually getting the lease correct between you, Stratton Town Council and the organisation is taking it on. But that's all now signed off.
Right.
By this time in the spring, I'd imagine, I'm looking at a councillor here, although I know he's no longer part of the organisation. They might be able to give us some more information.
So what about on the north side, there's some bits of fencing against the wall there, what's, what's that all about then?
I don't know that one. Cornwall council.
They're responsible for the wall as well, aren't they?
It's, it's, it's in an area of dereliction, I see that side.
Specifically where?
As you go, as you go up the steps, as you go onto the road, all the way along there, it's in a poor state. I'd go and have a look.
This is where you go, that's a surf club.
Yeah.
Go along there, plastic beach ups round the front where the old beach, where there used to be beach ups, they put a big space there and there.
Yeah.
They've got a fence in there, probably the wall's falling down. Is that right, girls?
I passed on that one, I haven't seen.
Well, you can see that from your beach up.
I haven't been down there, because the weather's not very nice. I'll, I'll go and have a look.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else want to? Yes, I think Chris.
Oh, yeah, brilliant, thank you. Um, item twelve, which is, you're always gonna spend some time on.
Um, yes.
I can only personally support that. Um, the Buchanan Society trustees have not, we've not actually, um, formally discussed it and such like, but, um, I think in the long run we would, because that is really important. Um, if you know anything about you, that is really, really important. If you know anything about BUD, that is really, really important. Other than that, I have some things that I've written down that I'll read to you, which might be of interest to you. A large workshop opening this past year, between the third of July to the twenty fifth of September. Buchanan Harbor Society bound the premises from two P M to five P M each Sunday afternoon. All the periods were double, double manned except on the tenth of July, when it was closed due to a Covid situation. That was the only closure. The total number of visitors and locals was a hundred and ninety-two. This averages out at sixteen per session, but obviously it's not always, but it's an average. This is slightly higher than in previous years, which I feel is probably as a result of the council's communications officer who uses social media to help increase the public's awareness of a, of a visit to the premises. I, I still hold a set of keys, I have done for a long time. And we hope to be able to continue to manage, to manage during twenty twenty-three. One item which, from a maintenance point of view, needs to be looked at, both sets of double doors, the door that you actually would unlock and go in, is really difficult to open. And I think it's because the inside paving is dropping away from the edge and it's raised. It's, you know, I, I don't think any lady, a lady would have it a difficulty to do that. So if, if that could be passed on. Right, the other, the other points are, the, the way that Low River operates all of the year is how waterways can be a benefit to everyone, including businesses. The mix of a waterway with open space, food and drink outlets, and other businesses creates a lively, active site. The Buchanan Harbor Society and the inland waterways west country branch support this proven concept. It clearly works and does not need to be changed. The imminent dredging, now, I, I wasn't aware that they started at the foreign, but that, so that's good. The imminent dredging and bank repairs are needed so that the canal can function. And Cornwall Council have done well to achieve the funding of, I believe, a million pounds. However, it is equally important that once those works are done, that Cornwall Council seek funding, complete the Buchanan regeneration project that ceased in two thousand and nine by making Rhodes Bridge a movable bridge to allow navigation above Focker Bridge and also to provide a slipway so that what are known as trailer boats can enter and leave the canal. The Buchanan is an important part of the tourism infrastructure. It is a stock fishery, a green area for nature and a quiet place for mental health. It should be remembered that BUD was built on sand, for as much of it is actually built on sand. And the sand trade was part of the catalyst that was the start of what we now know and love as BUD. Finally, Buchanan Harbor Society have submitted an application for a grant to assist with the twenty twenty-three bicentenary celebrations for the two-hundredth anniversary of the start of trading on the canal between BUD and Holsworthy. I was expecting to see it on the agenda tonight, do you know when it's likely to be decided? Because it is, but your current grant period ends at December, doesn't it, the end of December?
Yes, that's on tonight's agenda in terms of some tweaks, but fundamentally, we've now changed the process from how it used to be in terms of they've worked, it used to be taken piecemeal where they came in, now we have grant rounds. So in January, there'll be a process by which councils look at all the grant applications that come in and decide, not sure what exact date, it's a two-stage process, maybe agreed, maybe recommended later on, but do you agree January, I'm expecting? Or maybe to the first of?
Yeah, no, it's, it's on the twenty-third of Jan, of January, is the suggestion.
Right, so when does that leave us then? Well, if you don't know, I haven't got a clue.
Well, it will be in January or maybe the, the first meeting of February, when the grant will be decided.
Yes.
That's the same place. End of January.
Right, okay, I, will that, will that, what, which, which commit, which meeting would that be done with? You know, is it likely to be the oversight or, or full council?
We're suggesting a separate meeting for the grants. So it depends really whether people vote on that or not. There is a full council meeting I'll do on the twelfth of January.
Yeah.
What the paper's suggesting is that we do a separate grants meeting on the twenty-sixth. But it depends what people vote on.
Well, an in-person one, like this?
Yes.
Twenty-sixth of January?
Yeah, but as I say, it depends what people, whether people vote to accept that.
Okay, only that grant is, is quite important to us, I mean, will you give it to us? I accept that's yours, but it is quite important to us to do what we want to, or try and do, what we want to do. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chris. Anybody else?
Um, yeah, thank you. Just a point, later on, you're discussing the climate partnership, I believe, in the closing session.
Yes.
For commercial reasons. I, I'm not quite under, understand why that's commercial. It's a commercial decision. I'm just, it's, could you explain why it's considered commercial and it shouldn't be in open?
At this point, there are matters of confidentiality that we are unable to disclose.
So a lot of decisions will be made before it becomes public knowledge?
The decision, beyond this, the, the, the decision to, for the council to be the lead partner has already been made. And this is in effect an update on that process. Unfortunately, the way the lottery works is there are certain themes that we are prevented from discussing in public until, until they've made decisions and announcements. That's, that's, we're, we're bound by the rules of the process.
If, if we could go on to something that you're gonna discuss slightly earlier than that, I'd just like to say if the breakwater is allowed to go like it's going at the moment, you won't need to bother about climate change for the water to be coming rushing up the strand and taking out large portions of this town. You're only going to be here last week to see the level of the water in the, in the strand and to see that if it'd been a southwesterly pushing that water up, it would have come. And the breakwater isn't there to, shall we say, mitigate and protect the lock gates, protects the centre of BUD as well. And that plate, the BUD would be flooding regularly. Whether we have climate change or not, you need to get Cornwall Council to get off their, their, you know, black hole of whatever, how much that is, and actually get some funding to BUD and sort this problem out. Because we will have a town where you can function at certain times of the year else.
Thank you.
Absolutely right.
Okay, is there any other, yes, Mr. Jennings?
It was Tuesday, I think, there was somebody on the strand with a, taking levels? I said to him, what's he about? He said, oh, it's to do with the cycle trail. So what's this cycle trail gonna be about then, on the, when it's round?
Not, not to do with, yeah, Cornwall Council.
Yeah, I scored, he says normal catch up.
There's an answer, if you like.
Yes, Katie, thank you, I think that's a great point.
Because I can't believe anything should be put, let it push by there.
So the only cycle path that's planned is effectively the old Pathfields route between the Carriers and what is now the Bocca. Which goes, it'll go all the way up to the primary school. So that will be redefined as a cycle path.
So why is it taking levels, part of triangle and that?
No one here, I've seen all the plan.
Well, surely somebody from BUD council's gotta know what's going on in BUD.
If they don't tell us what's going on, then we don't know.
Well, shouldn't somebody be asking then?
We, we, we've not engineers or, you're not light operators.
No, I didn't tell you, I'd ask why he's doing it, not, I mean, we all know you're not the reason for the order, like, why is he doing it?
You can still take readings for the triangle for something that's happening up the road, so.
Okay.
So nobody knows what's going on in BUD then?
What, what I do?
Eh?
I do, but I don't know all that particular engineering we're doing on that particular day.
Well, good job, before I don't let me know, please.
I'll give it a go.
Thank you very much.
Do you want his name as well, darling?
Eh? His, his name's not, I mean, not head.
So, number nine, thank you. So, once the budget is preset? So first of all, to approve the budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, I think we need to keep it a little.
Well, as councillors and full council last week looked at the makeup of the budget, what I think appeared is in the effects, in the first instance, that the, those budgets with the amendments agreed last week. The only blank is the preset, because that's the next decision as to what they'll do. So the budget requirement is set out on the budget papers and then discussed last year.
So as long as we don't have any questions on that, I'm just gonna propose that we approve the budget of the council for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second one?
All those in favour, please? Okay, and all those against, and I'll stay. On to consider a review preset, as the town council's own, our town residents.
If I just introduce, from last week's meeting, in fact, the, the budgets, it gives the, the outcome of the budget gives a requirement for it, so the preset could, could necessarily be. And there was a lot of debate last week around how that, what that might look like in terms of actually setting the preset. So what we put in front of you today are three options. With others on the move, but in terms of, there's, the options range between not increasing the preset at all in terms of the actual counter tax charge, and actually bring the preset in nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-six. And that would mean a shortfall in terms of the year budget of fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-four, which would need to be met from reserves. We can discuss how that may work and the risks involved in that. At the other spectrum, due to the balance budget, would require a preset of one million, forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirteen, and that would have an increase of five point five two percent on town council, the government, the council tax. And then finally, we give as a possibility a midpoint of two and a half percent increase.
Thank you, Keith. So, do you have a question?
Uh, no, I was gonna do a proposal because.
No, not yet.
It was, it was the way that we was, because it's, there's potentially three choices here.
Yeah.
Like, I can see there first of all being a vote to propose if there's any increase or not, effectively. So it was like, okay, well, is, do people want an increase? Yes or no? And then, because then that would immediately basically cut out two of the options effectively.
The process that I was gonna go through is, first of all, I wanted to go around the table and get an expression from everybody of what their preferences, basically, are for the reasons. At the end of that, take a proposal from somebody, hopefully based on what the majority have said, but if not, it's a yes or no vote. So that's basically the process I was gonna take. Yeah?
Well, it would probably take longer.
Okay. It just gives everybody an opportunity, so to give their, their brief thought on what, you know, why their preferences, where they, you know, or they can just say their preference, even if you don't have to go into details, but I'd love to give everyone the opportunity to say what they're thinking and why, if they're not to. So, Peter, would you mind if I started on this side of the table all around?
Yeah, okay, sure. So I haven't been through this several times before. I know that setting the preset is never an easy thing to do, because we are gonna be asking people at BUD to pay out of their pockets to support the activities of this town council. Now, from, from what I see, this council's got an appetite to be a progressive council and to do some very supportive activities for our community. And I wanna mention the holidays action and food programme and the war rooms programme, both led by councillor Purchase, in my opinion, I may have got that wrong, and.
The war rooms, at least.
Right, okay, but, but anyway, those activities are something that this council should rightly feel proud about. But it does cost money. And the only way to be able to fund and support those activities is to effectively pay for it out of the money that we generate from our preset. Now, we know that we're facing an inflationary period. We know that our cost pressures of power and electricity will have gone up massively. We know that our costs of insurance have gone up massively. And we know that the biggest cost, which is our employment by the town council, is very likely to go up significantly next year. We, we never know, because that's all organised and agreed by, by separate boards and bodies. But I'm anticipating in my own mind, I imagine that next year, we'll be looking at somewhere between a seven and ten percent increase just to keep up with inflation for our own stuff, and I would support that when it does come. So to keep up with those activities and to avoid a, a, a financial cliff edge, which could very easily happen if we support our activities out of reserves, I would suggest that doing anything less than the cost of inflation would not be doing ourselves justice. And so at the moment, I think the biggest figure that we're presented with, which is a five point five two percent balance budget, seems entirely reasonable and proper to me. You must never forget that the town council preset is a relatively small part of the overall council that's payable. So if my message is and my desire is if we wish to remain in the longer term and be a progressive council that wishes to engage in ambitious activities supporting our community, the best way of doing it is by making sure that we're financially sound and able to do so.
Thank you, Jackie.
Let me read a quick couple of them. I would prefer not to put the preset up, because we have a healthy reserve, very healthy reserve. I know the argument is that you can't keep taking out reserves, because obviously then you have nothing left, but we do have a very healthy balance. And I think for one year, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, we don't need to put the preset up. So I feel that we, we shouldn't. We are a progressive council, but I don't think anything, anything we have in plan, we would have to stop doing.
Okay, thank you, Jackie.
Shaun? Yeah, I've written like a couple of questions down, so I'm just gonna read out what I've written down, if that's okay. So the first one is, is the long-term financial stability of the council under threat? I believe it's not. Can we complete or action all of the projects that we have planned without raising the preset this year? I believe that we can. Do we need to do it? It being raising the preset, I believe that we do not need to do it. And on this point, we do not need to do it, and why would we do it? Fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four pounds is money that we can find easily from our resources, reserves rather, rather than the pockets of our parishioners who are experiencing a cost of living crisis that we're all living through. So for that very reason, my preference would be to not to increase the preset this year, and freezers is.
Thank you, thank you, Shaun.
I'd agree with Shaun, Jackie, I think what we've seen over the past few years is, is the process of forecasting what our expenditure will be and what our income will be is a difficult one and very complicated. And through kind of underestimations or prudence on the side of, you know, erring on the side of caution, we've seen our reserves creep up and up. I think for this one year, given the situation we, we find ourselves in, the public find themselves in, I'd be very happy to, to freeze it where it is, just for this year, and then we understand that, you know, we're improving our forecasting all the time. Let's come back and see how we get on next year with forecasting and take it, you know, take the decision again then. But for this year, I'm happy to, um, keep it zero.
Thank you, Simon.
Um, yeah, and that's what I said last year, I don't want to put a bigger burden on poorer people. I would just like to come back on what Peter said, that the only way we can do this is, is to raise it, it's not. Item eleven, shall we charge more for our use of our facilities, would close the gap. You know, look at what we made renting out the pitch and puff grass area for six weeks out of fifty-two weeks. We do that for eighteen weeks, not necessarily with the same company, that fifty-four K is gone. So, a more dynamic use of our resources would close the gap, without needing to dip into reserves or renting the preset, which is, which are options that we should probably consider, but as for now, yeah, I would be leaning towards not raising it or raising it by a small amount and looking at other ways of raising funds from people that actually use the facilities, paying a bit more, that seems fair to me. You know, I, I shouldn't have to pay for somebody to hire a car, the person that hires the car pays for it. You know, if you hire a room, you, you and your club should be viable to pay for it. So, I, I would look at that before whacking it all on the public.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Yes, Katie?
Um, I believe that we should increase it by something. Um, by, I've been, um, saying with my estimations, uh, the current, like, if you take the, how much people are paying this year, in real life terms, in terms of the inflation now, you've gone from two hundred and forty-eight pounds and twenty-eight P to two hundred and sixty-five pounds, that's how much inflation is affecting things now. Um, like, so I'm almost suggesting that we don't necessarily increase it all the way up to two hundred and twenty, uh, sixty-five. In real terms, we'd be decreasing it to like two hundred and sixty-two pounds or something, or two hundred and sixty-one pounds. But then, uh, it's from Band-Aid, uh, Band-Aid by the way, uh, but then that would obviously be a real, like, that would be an increase, like, but it would be a decrease in terms of people's take home, really, et cetera, because of inflation, right? And below the inflation, so it's like, that's the compromise route. Um, I'm seeing, like, on the calculator, uh, for, like, someone who is in Band-Aid, uh, that sort of three point one six percent increase is five pounds, twenty-three P a year extra they're paying. And even on Band-H, like, I was, I was assuming like, oh, that's gonna be a hundred pounds, right? It's not, it's fifteen pounds, seventy maximum. So, the biggest building that someone has in the town, like millions and millions of pounds, they're only paying fifteen pounds, seventy extra. Um, the other thing is, looking literally at the bottom, again, on this agenda, um, are things like big capital purchases, such as buildings, such as potentially garden, no, not gardens, uh, allotments, like, and those big capital purchases, just sold cells and things like that, you, like, you need to, like, if you literally take fifty-five thousand out of reserves, plus all the inflation pressures that they're gonna have, plus also the increase of costs and everything, I don't think we could start to be doing things like that. And if that's something that this council wants to do, obviously we haven't decided explicitly on these examples, then I think we need to put up something, but I don't think it necessarily needs to be the full amount. Like, I think, as I said, to be that compromise and to feel like we're still, it's still supporting the public, we put it up just a bit, basically.
The middle option.
Uh, uh, to some extent, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Katie.
Um, I'm telling, um, I don't really wanna pay more, um, you know, we all have to pay it, but it concerns me with A, I heard Keith saying about the, we don't know how much the bill's gonna go up because caps, et cetera. Um, we don't know about insurance next year, um, so that concerns me, but after hearing it's gonna be that amount, the, you know, it could be sort of a possibility for that, I probably wanna go for the middle. And because it also concerns me, the, a massive jump the year after. Um, and I just think, I, I think that could be quite cruel to people, um, being, being too much of a shock. But also here, how much we've got in reserves, um, but can we get away with doing what we're doing with the electric and the way it's going?
Thank you.
Oh, um, it's difficult. I, I don't agree that we've got any real serious, long-term planning ideals for this council. No money has been set aside for serious things like global warming and whatever have you. I think that if the council had been prudent, it would obviously, um, go for the five percent, uh, because that's only standing still. So I, I think it's important to, to look to the future and have a good reserve, ready to deal with emergencies that are gonna be knocking on your door in the next decade, you know, so that's my view, a maximum, to stand still, that's all it is.
Thank you.
I'm not going to be as eloquent as everybody else, but I think as a council, we need to put it up, that we would actually be irresponsible if we didn't put it up, because we don't know what's around the corner. The organisation I work for, we've just had it round that, um, the energy costs for heat in the buildings is currently about five hundred thousand pounds per annum, it's going up to two point five million pounds. Those are the sorts of things we as a council have to be aware of, so I think we should have to put it up.
Are you saying top option? Just, just for my.
Just stand still, top option.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Um, I'm in agreement with Mike that we need to look at ways in which we can increase the revenue, um, but for the time, we do need to put it up just to stay on top of inflation, um, otherwise, we're gonna have, yeah, um, an issue. It's not, it, we just won't be financially sustainable if we don't put it up, because inflation's gonna go up a lot. It's also one of the ways that we can eke out a small amount of money from the more wealthy in this community and put it into services and also the wealth of people that have second homes in this community. Um, it's another way of getting money out there. The less fortunate, the more vulnerable in our communities, they're protected by the banding system, so, and it's not a great deal of money going up anyway, so I think we just do it.
So you're in the top? Thank you, guys. Ethan?
Um, I'm in favour of it staying as it is. Um, my, as, as in, uh, a zero percent increase. I haven't been here particularly long, but my, my instinct is that, given the circumstances, the more money people have in their pockets, the better.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna, it's a few things, uh, which I've listened to both sides of this argument on, on quite a few of the meetings that we've had, and, you know, there's a lot of things that resonate, you know, things about being a progressive council and so on, that are very dear to my heart, as you would know. But I think that the argument which we can't make, we genuinely can't make, is that we need to increase money in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Because I think it's unarguable that with the predicted expenditure of the council next year, both for day-to-day and projects, we can easily afford the money that we have. Um, I think we're sitting on a mountain that's had to pay his money, carefully put aside, and the sun is shining slightly more brightly than it is today. Uh, but we've got no clear plans about how we're going to spend it. So my view is that we should stand in solidarity with our residents this year and demonstrate to them that we understand that in this year, the worst of the years, we are not gonna make their burdens worse. We understand it is raining as hard as it has been in decades, and although we may not be responsible for much of their costs, what little we are responsible for, we are not going to just take their hard-earned money and put it in our bank account. And my feeling on top of that is that we should put our collective shoulders to the roof and develop a clear, coherent and resource set of plans for projects which we can take to the residents next year and hand on par, saying, this is what we can do if we increase your council tax. These are the improvements we make, do you want us to do? Um, I'd quite like to record your votes as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Martin.
Um, thank you. Uh, Phil, you, you've sort of said everything. I'm feeling like I'm being gassed here by, um, being told that we're gonna fall off a cliff in two years' time if we don't do things. It's not true. Fifty thousand pound shortfall fits into one point seven seven million and thirty-four times, thirty-four years of shortfall, thirty-four years. We're sitting on an absolute fortune, and it's not doing anything for the community. It's sitting in a bank, not doing things for the community, so we don't have the right to ask for more when we don't need it, and it offends me deeply that we're discussing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
It's, uh, ironic that it's on to me to speak last on this, because I believe I spoke first on this, um, a number of weeks ago when it was first mentioned, and I said at the time that philosophically I believe in balanced budgets, and if we want to put projects forward, then we should be funding those projects, and the reserve should not be seen as a magic money trick. And I also find it ironic that some of the people around this table who regard themselves in general terms as, as progressive and in general terms as redistributory type people are saying, no, we're not going to ask for the extra fifteen quid or whatever it was for a Band-Aid property, because we'll just fund it out of reserves, as if those reserves were gonna last forever, and as if there wasn't huge possibilities for that money to be spent improving this town, and maybe even saving this town. We know that Cornwall council has retreated to the citadel, they are going to do their legal minimum and very little else. We know there are massive problems ahead. We're talking about the Great Water. Now, our reserves wouldn't touch the size of the fix of the Great Water, but we could make a contribution with other partners towards doing that. We've been told to date that it is raining, it's raining, it's the worst it can possibly be. I don't for a second believe that. I believe that we have got a light drizzle compared to what potentially is ahead in terms of climate change, in terms of the economy going south, in terms of all sorts of issues. And I do not believe at all that this is the time to rake the reserves for fifty thousand pounds or even fifty quid. I think that we should be putting the council tax preset up by the amount that covers our budget, and we should be unashamed at telling the people at Boot why we're doing it and that they are getting decent value for money, the services this council will provide, having said all that. And I know it's, some of that is a reiteration of what I've said previously. Having put that on the record, I will also put on the record that as a co-opted councillor, someone who has not only not had an election, but didn't even present themselves forward to face an election on this particular issue, having given it some due considerations, I do not feel it is appropriate to admit the vote, if the vote is close, I do not feel it is appropriate for someone who has not put themselves forward for election to tie this council to one set of presets or another. So, I do not intend to vote on this matter, but I do urge everybody who is intended to vote to have a balanced budget.
Thank you. Okay. Right. Okay, so.
We seem to have flipped from last year, haven't we? Last year, everybody that argued not to raise it wanted to put up the price of rental, because they felt everybody, or sorry, we didn't put up the price of rental, but they felt everybody should pay fairly for potential to use things, and it is completely flipped now, the counter argument. If, if we watched a video of this conversation last year, I don't need to be blamed, but I'm probably the only one with a consistent position.
Okay. Yeah. Having listened to everybody, my, my, I was just, yeah. It's a really, really, really tough thing, and I can totally see both sides of it. My personal feeling is that, and admittedly, I've gone from one to another to another, as I've gone around the table and I've listened to everybody, I've thought, yeah, you know, and it is that tough, isn't it? Um. I know, okay, does, does anybody want to put a proposal forward? Yes, Peter?
I propose that we, um, accept a balanced budget of five point five two percent, which in real terms, according to inflation, would actually be a cut of approximately five percent, because inflation is running around ten percent. So I think the increase of five point five percent is effectively important, because it's what's been presented to us as a balanced budget. However, it's splitting inflation down the middle, we'll bear half from, obviously the other half.
Okay, so all those in favour of raising it to five point five two?
If they're, it's gonna cover it according to votes, it's very requested, so we will have to, uh, take some.
So this is all those for five point five two percent.
That's fine, yeah.
Please, the fifth one, and all those against?
I'm not walking out because we lost them.
How was there any abstentions, as I said? Abstentions?
Why, Mr.
Will you mind?
Against, sorry.
He was against, I think he was against. I'm sorry, can we, just to show Hansley against, we've got.
Actually, sorry, I don't think I've got Katie's votes.
Ah, Katie was against, yeah, Katie was against. And myself.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
Ethan?
So is that, that is not subject to being carried? Katie?
Um, I propose that we try the option B, which is the two point five percent increase on the, the preset. Does, does this need to be recorded as well, then? It's a whole agenda idea.
I think that's recorded, it must be requested on tape, it is for the whole.
That's two point five percent, yeah. Okay, so all those, that's seconded, so all those for the middle, two point five percent option.
Can we vote twice?
Yeah, but, yes, it's a difference, it's a second. All those against?
Seven against.
Uh, any abstentions?
Abstentions?
Yeah.
Do I say anything? It's best costly vote.
Kevin could vote, of course, and that would make it.
If it's like. On a matter of conscience, I have to say. You're against.
Okay. So the third one, final option.
I propose that we leave it at zero percent.
For this year, second. All those in favour?
I wish you could say something.
And against. And abstaining. Two abstains, exactly, Katie, yeah, that's two abstentions. Thank you very much, everybody. Number ten. Uh, report from the Park House management forum and consider recommendations. I'm shaking.
So you've all had the report, hopefully, and have a chance to uh flip through. Um, so since April, the forums liaised with, so formed, uh to review the Park House operations. Um, and liaised with staff, conducted a survey of regular users um and uh spoken to external bodies. Um, the feedback's been overwhelmingly positive. Um, users were very complimentary about the, the whole offering of the, of the building and in particular the hardworking staff. Um, so just to keep it as brief as possible, um, so there are four recommendations. Um, so we identified a number of um simple improvements, so um equipment, signage and decor mainly. Um, which would um easily be covered by about a quarter of the uh budget that was allocated originally. Um, so a maximum spend of five thousand pounds. Um, the second recommendation is to kind of formalise the direction of travel that's already, that's already taken place, so um to sort of amalgamate the, the roles, um, or the, the, the um tasks that have been, been carried out already to um create a um coordinator role, so who is dedicated to um the, the, the running of the, the building. Um, and will be focused on its improvement and continued development, marketing, connecting with other bodies, introducing, introducing computerised booking systems, um that kind of thing, so dedicated to the, the Park House centre. Um, the third recommendation is to formalise the operation of the bar. At the moment, there's somebody who um comes in and runs a bar if it's, if it's requested, if there's an event on, people want a bar but they don't want to rent themselves. Um, so we need to formalise that arrangement. And number four um is to do, to basically re, rework the reception area. So there's a nicer public facing area when people come in. Um, and that's where the coordinator would be, would be positioned, so there with the public face, um, we've got, we've obviously sort of, sort of continued support from um from the, the back office and uh, yeah, that's it basically.
Right. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there any questions? Yeah.
Would that creating a whole new staff position?
No, no, so it's, it's, it's just kind of formalising what's already, what's already been happening over the last year.
Katie? Um, so the items for purchasing that you've got listed. Um, it'd be good to have a bit more review about some of these because um, for example, you've got a projector on there, that's a standard projector, whereas some, like it being there and the screen being over there. Whereas short throw projectors are much more practical for portable uses and things and there's one actually being used in the uh Methodist church for Lego days. Um, so, um, but then also if you are going for Walacots then, like, they don't, like, their short throw is like a thousand pounds more. And there's alternatives that aren't for cake, et cetera, so, um, yeah.
Could we discuss those, um, yeah.
Yeah, basically, like, yeah.
Actually, nothing's, nothing's been awarded, it's been promised, so.
So, yeah, basically.
Suggestions, really.
Yeah, cool.
Yes, okay. Any other questions, Jackie?
Not a question, I just want to say thank you, um, to Jackie for all of this hard work. Um, just on, on top of the end.
What is required.
I mean, I've done basically nothing, being a sound board, but Jackie's worked so hard on this with the staff and like also all the users. Interviewed them all, spoke to everyone, got really good feedback. Just, yeah, it's just really like, it feels to me like good practice is going to continue into the future with the stuff that we've got, which is amazing, so yeah, I, I propose that we accept the recommended recommendations of this report.
All those in favour then, please? Thank you very much. Okay, and the second part of that related to is to consider a price increase for the next financial year, twenty three, twenty four, for charge services, so that's parkhouse room hire, castle rooms, wedding hire, outdoor spaces higher and sanctuary fees.
Yeah, I'm sure we can discuss, but I would, I would like to say, I, I think, I think an increase would be appropriate.
Yeah, you had a paragraph in there, didn't you?
Yes.
So the overwhelming majority of users said the pricing is very reasonable with a small number saying they prefer no price rise. Um, in agreement with, on the advice of staff, um, there is a proposal for a small increase of five percent in hire fees. We feel the proposed improvements to equipment and decor is fair and equates to an increase per session of between fifty four pence and six pounds twenty eight depending. Yes.
One clarification on things generally here, um, sorry, struck me off, but car park is a particular um different issue in terms of the question because practically, uh, you can only go up in whole chunks, not um so eighty eight four pence an hour is not going to work. So, I, just in, in, in formulating your decisions, I would suggest that car park is could be, might need to be taken separately depending on which direction council wishes to go. Um, because I, in effect, is keep it the same at eighty pence an hour or move it to ninety pence an hour. That really are, which is just over ten percent increase.
Um, I had two thoughts about this. The first was about the car parking and wondering whether we should postpone that until we've got the new um machinery and I don't know what the, that's related, isn't it, to the, what they're doing.
Yes, there are some interactions around that. Um, to raise a car park, actually, there's also a process to go through with car parking orders.
So in order to increase that.
So I wondered whether we should perhaps take the car parking out of it. But the second thing I just wondered was in terms of the wedding hire, whether people you know, whether the castle feels like it, that kind of inflation increases just kind of commercially what they want to do is that, you know, I don't know. It feels to me like wedding hire is such a kind of personal, individual thing that it, there's a, you know, there's a wedding hire market and that's what we should be kind of assessing our prices against rather than just raising the buy inflation or not raising the buy inflation, but I don't, you know, I don't know. I don't know what the, I don't know what the council people think about that.
Katie? Um, there isn't any figures at the bottom of the higher charge sheet I can see that tells us how much predicted income would be from these different changes. Do you know that at all?
I'm just trying to find the sheet.
I don't know if I'm just not.
No, it's not on that, but these are just the rest, keep it simple, um.
Because I guess that obviously I'd like to see it now that we know what the preset's doing, then obviously if one of the arguments is, well, we can hide, get it back elsewhere, then I need to know how much people's values are.
To pick up on an earlier point, and again, this is, it's just about budgeting, there is a mix between um take up and price, price charge and number of users. Um, an underlying kind of construct of using the budgeting was a five percent increase in income. Now, again, we can go back and do the whole budget conversation, but clearly, you know, there's a lot of unknowns in here. We don't know about the level of usage, we don't know recession, et cetera, whether the number of tourists will still come next summer, those are the issues that we've made at the moment, and I did say that, you know, we've been um, the uh a lot less prudent this year in our budgeting than we have in previous years. But, um, so a five percent is where we're generally, we pitched it.
I might need some time to like extract some of the stuff out of the budget then to work out those increases to see if we can get near the fifty five that we're down, I guess.
I can do that for you in a while.
I mean, yeah, if, if you can do that, if you need Excel, I've got it here, but.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just looking at the figures, I'm going to give you a quick view.
Yeah.
Because most of, I mean, obviously, about a third of our income is from trading, that. Um, most, but probably a relatively small amount of this comes through the charges. In the parkhouse hiring, we're looking at fifty five thousand pounds income. And that's, and that, actually, I do, we did some more work around that, particularly because of the um the working group that was, which was working through this, so that is a mix of a five percent price increase and an assumption that bookings are up because that, our forward bookings are already up. So that's where, so if you put it up ten percent or five percent, there's that order of change, another five thousand ish, order of change.
Because you've got a fair bit from, I'm guessing, looking at the wedding income here? Uh, which goes up a fair bit, so, because obviously that's a big chunk, right, like a ten percent on the wedding income would be quite substantial.
No, that'd be good.
It's like eight thousand four hundred pounds and then like previously was seven thousand six hundred, so. But that's assuming a five percent, so I'm guessing a ten percent would be about a thousand pound, would it? Top of the head ish. Oh, am I not quite working it out, right?
No, we're talking eight hundred for every, every ten percent, aren't we?
Okay.
So, to be honest, it's not, it's not highly significant
Yeah.
in terms of balance in the books, it's not, um.
Um, you answered a bit of a davy question, really. Um, on the first one, it says, you know, the room at one. Is that, what, what period is that? Is that half a day, a day?
It's a half, half, it's a morning, afternoon or evening, the session.
So that's first, right, okay.
A session.
Right, thank you.
Four hour session.
Mike? Right, thank you.
I was just wondering, can we raise different things by different amounts, because at the moment it's all in, I would say, concern five percent of ten, I mean, I'd quite happily hammer the car park. You know, we want to discourage carbon and all that lot, you know. Let's be honest, most of them's nowhere they can park for free. I can't remember the last time I took a park. So we sit with people that have taken long car journeys to get here, we're helping the environment and, you know. We're raising funds that we've just previously discussed, we've got a shortfall in our budget. So if we can get people that are coming down and spending an Airbnb and avoiding paying tax, I'm all for it. And if that means we don't have to raise castle hire and everything else, uh, you know, fitness clubs and all that lot, great.
Can I just give a bit of information now, and again, we haven't necessarily got statistics on this, but we do know a lot of parkhouse users who do the car park. There's a free element round the front, but it's very small, not a disabled parking, so. Um, and, and I know in previous, parkhouse users have said things like, um, you know, they're happy with paying the higher rates for the room, but if we, if we can charge them, they'll leave the car park. I'm, yeah, I'm just making, I'm just making sure councillors are aware of that is a consideration.
Yeah, can I just put in someone there? A friend of mine goes to the art society here on a Thursday afternoon. He lives outside of you, he has a strike in, there is no public transport. He's also elderly and he's got his art materials to carry. And he's on a pension, not a very good one. So you would be hammering him.
Yeah.
Thank you. Philip?
Yeah, yeah, you are going to catch some people with it, but.
Yes.
For sure, I might be eating something.
Just make sure you're coming to me when you.
I'm sorry.
It's all right, so come on, Philip.
Just going back to the, the thing about the weddings. Presumably the people who booked already have got a price, have they, for next year? I mean, unless they've booked very short term.
Yes.
So.
So that, okay.
So we may not actually get any more wedding money if we put the weddings up. I don't know. Or are we just going to stuff them with an extra cost?
On, on the narrow issue of the car park, I'd always felt that if an organisation is hiring a park house, then depending on the, the sort of organisation it is, if it's, for example, exercising for mobility, where they know how many people are going to come to a particular session, then they should be able to have some kind of either free or discounted um parking for those people, because the only reason that we're here in a park house rather than somewhere else in town is because it's nice and level and flat and people are perhaps not so well can, can get in. So the idea that we can protect, you know, events but at the same time still hammer people in the car park, that, that might be a little bit of a misnomer, because if if a large number of our user groups are having to pay significant amounts just for then, you know, people will start looking elsewhere.
Can I just give a quick update on what the surrounding car parks are charging? Uh, so one hour, assuming that was what we're looking at. Uh, apparently it's ninety p at Summerlees during the summer. Um, during the winter, it's one pound twenty seven for all day, apparently. Um, it's in the Burnview private car park, which obviously that's commercial and stuff, so for an hour for them is one pound. So if you are going to be obviously putting up to a pound, like, you it, it, you basically just need to look at the competitive advantages and disadvantages of it. But also, you know, what everyone's fees are of the Burnview car park as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, when I, when I say pound, you look at the actual maths. We're talking eight p. And we're now getting an argument back from people that said fifteen pound a year is no biggie. Eight p to park outside is suddenly a problem. You know, a hammer might have been the wrong term, but, you know, go, go after the people. They're, you know.
Were you on the ten percent then, Mike, when you were talking about this?
Yeah, it's currently eighty p. If we raise it by ten percent, it's eighty eight, but Keith clarified we couldn't do things, sort of, you'd round it up to ninety. Possibly even a pound.
Yeah.
It's still cheaper than the Cornwall council.
Not a pound?
You know, it's not, it's not even, some.
Yes, so separate them up as so potential to be different percentages per, per each. Okay, Peter?
The, the nearest competitive car park is the Walcar Park, which belongs to Cornwall Council. They run seventy pence for a single hour. However, one to two hours is two pound thirty, which effectively means if you stop for two hours, it's over two quid or two pound thirty. Two to three hours is three pounds fifty, so it's over a pound an hour. Three to four hours is four pounds fifty. So unless you stay for just one hour, in every case, it's over a pound an hour. So if we're talking about competitive advantage or competitive comparison. comparison, a pound an hour would be less than the nearest car park. So I'd be happy to go to ninety pence an hour. I'd probably be happier to go to a pound an hour.
Okay, I'll come to Kevin, and then back on, I think what Keith's saying, going through the, um, separate things as Mike said earlier, you know, so that we could potentially do different percentages depending on what we're talking about. Kevin?
Yeah, I, I think the reason that the Woodcar Park is, for example, different charging structure than, say, Summerlees, is simply because it has been designated by Cornwall Council and back in the day by North Cornwall District Council as effectively a short stay car park. So people come in, they quick up a coffee and they get gone. They're not, it's not the sort of car park where people are going to park for a considered period of time. Now, we can say, well, that's the same thing with our car park, people are going to park quickly, they're going to whip in, they're going to do whatever activity it is, and then they're going to get gone. But we still come back to the point that a lot of people that use your car park are people that use the Park House Centre. So effectively, we're making a surcharge on the higher part of the centre. And, you know, I was saying, fifteen quid on a, on a banned age property ain't a lot, because people who live in a banned age property tend to have a few quid in the bank. People who use Park House Centre may or may not have a few quid in the bank, but if they're coming for, say, forty weeks a year, then suddenly whacking it up starts to look significant, and they're putting pressure on the people that organise their activities to maybe move somewhere else. So, as I say, I would, I would not be against charging a quid or a quid fifty to somebody who's just rocked up in a pub, don't know what they're doing, falls into the nerves about the car park like the muck. But that's not the user group that tends to be in our car park.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, I think since we are on the subject of the car park, if I'm generally right, um, I will start with that one. Does anybody have a proposal for the percentage increase we might like to see on the car park?
I'd probably put it up ten percent.
All those in favour?
We're just clarifying. We're just clarifying, that'd be ninety pence an hour and ten percent on the...
Yes.
So am I, am I correct?
I won't use Finness.
No, but I do need to be very clear, you're voting on this and this is your decision.
Am I correct in understanding that that's the same price as the lowest priced Cornwall County council?
Lower.
Yeah.
Unless, to be fair, you stay for one hour. If you keep it below an hour, it's seventy pence in the war, it'd be ninety pence here. But the moment you go over an hour, we'd be a lot cheaper here.
Do we have a second? Sorry. Oh, yes, thank you. So all those in favour? And all those against? Thank you. Now I'll shoot that up to the top. So Park House Centre, um, so it's Park House Centre, I would possibly... Yes.
Well, in line with what the town clerk have advised us,
Yeah.
that he'd base next year's budgeting on a five percent increase.
Yeah.
I, I think we've got to go for a minimum of five percent. So I, I'd be happy to propose that unless anyone wants any further debate.
And does that include outdoor spaces as well? Are you including outdoor spaces and indoor spaces, basically, in Cornwall County? Seems sensible to, to me, I would say.
Probably everything, unless anybody's got a better argument.
Yeah. Okay, second up, Peter?
I was going to say, um, just want to double check to make sure, because we've just put inflation, like, you know, like the ten percent increase on, like, flip chart and paper and stuff. I'm assuming that we're still making a profit on that with the increase in costs of everything, right? Like, we're not just giving away, I mean, some of these things obviously cost us to supply, like the, the pa, I know it's such a small thing, the paper here, there's probably going to be a, a few little things. But assuming, I can't remember the last one, but yeah. Yeah, so it just, I don't know if there's any other thing else, like, for example, like the gravestone stuff, like...
No, these, these are fees for us processing stuff, they're not basically, I don't think, that's probably the one you found, that's probably the only material supply. The rest is income into the budget against...
I guess the other example would be, um, the electric costs specifically around, like, cordas and fridges and stuff, which obviously tends to be quite a factor. Depends what type of fridge you have. If you've got sideways fridge, a lot. If you've got chest fridge, none. Um, but, uh, yeah, I, okay, so I might just fathom you one then, it's basically what he was saying.
Can I just clarify, Peter, as well, I'm not proposing. You said earlier, did you mean everything going down through, so cemetery, weddings, everything?
Yeah, everything excluding parking, which we've already done.
Yeah.
I can read my council, read my wedding, my outdoors business, cemetery, that's what's on the head.
Yeah. Second up, you did, sorry.
Okay, so all those, all those in favour, that's a five percent on everything, five percent. No, I was really confused, because I thought you said at least five percent, and then it was going to be, like, there was going to be something else about, like, well, is it five percent or ten percent then?
If you want to clarify, you...
And no one taking the, the green colour, as suggested by the town clerk?
The five percent, yeah.
Okay.
So, sorry, all those in favour, and the five percent? And all those against? There's many extensions that we had in the end, okay. That's everything, I mean, is it? Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, so number twelve, to discuss concerns of the poor parent breakwater and lobbying Cornwall Council and the Environment Agency to swiftly agree and fund a maintenance programme. Would you like to, uh, say anything about this, Peter?
Okay, so, so bear in mind, we've got a very long agenda. I, I think we've had an awful lot of debate around this table, and I've been presenting, I don't think, almost every council meeting so far this year. I'm disappointed at the apparent ability of the Cornwall Council to pick up the expense of maintaining the breakwater to a standard that I personally would find satisfactory. And I know Mr Barrett has been down there and recorded the work that was taken through or done throughout the summer, and I think that it's very evident from his records that the work done is, I think unsatisfactory would be about the kindest you could possibly put to it. So what I wanted to do was to actually get the Environment Agency and Cornwall Council in a room together. The reason I want to do this is because I don't think Cornwall Council want to pick up the tab because they believe that the breakwater is a flood defence asset, therefore to be funded by the Environment Agency. The Environment Agency say in turn it's a Cornwall Council asset. So you've got two people arguing the toss, and I think we need to get them in a room together and try to see whose head is going to break first. Um, I have had a communication with a gentleman called Chris Inch, who's handed on to me, uh, the name of the Environment Agency contact. The Environment Agency contact has already expressed an interest and willingness to partake in a meeting. So I think if we just get the authority of this council to do that, um, in a formalised way, which I'm requesting now, then we can formally invite the two parties to come together with interested councillors to have that session.
Yeah.
And lay our cards absolutely bare and understand what our expectations are going to be going into the future.
And just as a, a thing that I wrote down in discussions, um, that Ian had mentioned, if, like, if he doesn't mind me saying, he brought up the potential of whether it could be classed as a building's risk, whether that's something that could be looked into, perhaps?
Yes. I, I don't see why it couldn't be, but potentially, I mean, it's a grade two listed structure, so it needs to be maintained appropriately according to our listings.
Yes, Phil.
Um, I don't want to kind of stop any progress that's made with it, but my personal feeling is that this should be a public meeting, that we have a public meeting with the Environment Agency and the council. And I know that that may, that may make them more reluctant to come, but I feel that they potentially need to see the level of concern that there is in my community, in the community about these assets. And I know that they may think, well, I'm not going to step into the lines then. But I think that having, having comfortable, comfortable private meetings about this might, you know, this might be a point at which we should say to them, you know, you need to kind of come and answer to the people who are paying the wages. I'd be interested in a conference about that. Whether that, whether that's...
The responder's going to take other questions.
Um, I'll take Simon, and then I'll come to you, Peter, if that's all right.
Completely agree that we should, um, get them up here, and I, I can take the point about the public meeting, I don't see why you couldn't do both, you know, they will, they should be able to speak before a public meeting for sure. I would also say whilst we're on the subject of the beach and the coastal defences, whilst the first line of defence is breakwater, the second line of defence is probably the Summerlees dunes. There is a beach and dune management plan that was, that was written in two thousand seventeen, very little of it's been implemented by Cornwall Council. So without wishing to dilute the attention on the breakwater as that first line of defence and something that's, you know, under a lot of stress, so are the dunes, you know, and, and that whole area, the, the Gavin Baskets disintegrating into horrible, you know, spiky wires, the whole area does need to be looked after properly. If you look at the beach and dune management plan, there's some very low cost, very simple things that can be done to start arresting the erosion of the dunes, um, that just aren't being done. And so I'd like really, at some point, to kind of address that with all the process as well.
Charlotte, again?
Yeah, I just want to kind of bounce off the back of what Simon's just said. You can't really talk about the breakwater without talking about other, like, assets and the way that water moves in our community, whether that's, you know, rivers or the sea. Um, it needs to be seen holistically, and to do anything else is actually narrowing your gaze in a quite kind of restrictive direction. Um, there are already plans in place, as Simon said, and there are things that can be done that will help the impact on other structures that are bearing excessive load and things that will bear excessive load in the future as we know, as sea level rises and storms, you know, are more powerful and all of those things. So, yeah, but I, yeah, get, let's get everyone together and have a chat and, yeah.
Okay.
On the issue of the sand dunes, what many people don't understand is the sand dunes are not at all natural, they're not at all in their natural place. If nature was completely left alone, the sand dunes would actually be where the car park is now. And that area which we now avoid, the sand dunes would be flood plain and river. Um, the only reason sand dunes are there is because the Gavin Baskets are there. The only reason Gavin Baskets are there is because they were put there. So the whole thing is manmade, and as a manmade system, needs intervention and maintenance. So I fully agree that, yes, the Environment Agency, Cornwall Council, interested parties need to be involved in that. On the narrow issue of getting the EA and Cornwall Council round the table to talk about the breakwater, I think that in itself is a big win. And to conflate that at this stage by talking about public meetings is to kind of risk the, um, progress that has already been made. So I believe that in the first instance, there should be a meeting between elected members of this council, the EA, Cornwall Council representatives, and then when the issues are fully understood and the likely response of each organisation is fully understood, then we may go to a, a public event. But I think it's a, it's a stacked process, and to leap straight into a public meeting with, uh, certain individuals loudly is, uh, is not the great way to go.
Yes.
Wouldn't like to open a window, would you? Why should I open it?
Go ahead.
Thanks. You could shake a fortune, turn an eighty there, but...
It's not old.
Hey?
It's not old.
It's all the hot air.
Thank you to all our contributors at the hotel. Ask them please. Right, no, um, so councillor purchase, I, I'd absolutely take your point about whether a meeting, sorry, through the chair, should be public or private. Uh, but I think in the first instance, a, a meeting between elected councillors and the trust that the public give to us by electing us to represent them along with the interested agencies would be the first step. Uh, but I take the point, I think the public are interested, and I think they have a right to be consulted and to be part of the process. So i- if you would accept it, that if and when we do have this meeting, that we say it's very important to us that we demonstrate to the public that they have an opinion to interact with us and you, and put their opinion forward, and we'll try to get a public meeting done as soon as we reasonably can after the initial meeting.
I, I don't feel...
I'm sorry, speaking to you, I should be speaking to the chair.
No, it's fine, yeah, okay. Okay, um, so if there are no other questions or comments, did you...
Um, um, right, okay, so I'd propose, um, that we set up a meeting, sorry, uh, between Cornwall Council and the Environment Agency. Um, I've already warned them this meeting is coming.
Yeah.
Um, at the invitation of this council. Um, and as far as I'm concerned, any council would be welcome to come to that meeting, and we'll circular those details when the meeting comes up. Is that okay? Sorry, is that too much of a proposal? No, good. Sorry, just to add, are we going to push for that, the breakboard, to be reclassified as flood defence slash climate change? Because we're doing a massive amount, so, you know, we're debating the BCP thing later. Probably the most, Paul hit the nail on the head, the most important thing we can do is make sure that breakwater is maintained, wouldn't, you know, the EA are spending a fortune along the riverbank here. They may as well flush that money down the drain if the breakwater is. You know, it's, it needs to be joined up. So do we need to get it reclassified so it all becomes part of the same plan? Yes. Well, okay, so addressing you through the chair, if you've adopted, um, probably. But I don't want to jump the gun. What I want to do is to establish whose responsibility it is. Is it the EA? Is it Cornwall Council? Once we've established that responsibility, then we can hold their feet to the flag. Well, heaven, the water would be a better way.
Okay, so can I just, can I just, so, okay, all those in favour, then, please? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, uh, number thirteen, to request Cornwall Council to undertake the transport audit, um, via community area network with an offer to park funders study. Peter, again?
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Right, so this all comes about because of the issues that we're having with the Exeter bus. So the two other regional councillors, Nick Chope Pack and Shaun Tilby, and I had a meeting with the Cornwall Council Cabinet Member for Transport two and a half weeks ago. And, and we also said, look, Exeter bus aside, we're actually pretty peeved at the level of interest that Cornwall Council puts in to our public transport network here. For instance, if you live in West Cornwall, where all the bus routes only start and finish within our county boundary, you get a very significant discount on the fare. And this was subsidised by a very large government grant. But the moment you dare to cross a border, and reality is, an awful lot of our services do cross the border into Devon, you get no subsidy whatsoever. And I think that we are being disenfranchised up here, and probably all the border communities as well in Cornwall. Uh, the portfolio holder suggested that we perform a transport audit, which basically means getting a specialist in to actually look at the challenges that we face. And we all know what those challenges are. We know that it's almost impossible to get to Barnstable Hospital unless you own your, your own car. It's really difficult to get to Plymouth, but if you have a repeated, um, treatment necessary in one of our major hospitals, it's going to cost you an awful lot of money. Uh, but Cornwall Council don't seem to understand that. They don't seem to have put that level of support to the border communities, but North Cornwall especially, in this area that we represent. So what I would like to do, and what the portfolio holder suggested, was that we perform along the Cornwall Council, a transport audit, probably by a separate specialist company that'll come in and look at all of these links and the way that we travel and what our needs are. And our needs cannot be assessed purely on numbers of bums on seats, it has to be... It has to be assessed as a fair access to be able to get to where we want to get to. Um, and once we have that audit, we'll have a very strong weapon to go back to Cornwall Council and say, get your house in order, we want to be treated fairly, and have the same equal opportunities for the same cost and opportunity to travel as everywhere else within the county. Uh, so to do that, we probably will need to put our hands in our pockets. I'm not sure what the figure would be, maybe we ought to put a price on it. But if we offer up some funding, it shows our intent and Cornwall Council will, I hope, match or even more than match fund whatever we put forward to, to allow us to actually commission that study.
Boys view the only place you've got no Sunday bus going south of them. Everybody's talking about Exeter. I went, I went to Boscastle the other week, I had the joy, it was a Sunday. You can go anywhere else in Cornwall, you can go on a Sunday, you can go from Ladsen to Plymouth, you can go from Wakebridge down Newquay and Sitcolumbe and all over, here you stop. I mean, like I said before, who wants to go to Exeter? Wanna go south?
Yeah, so I can see the value in this audit massively for our community, yes.
I'm slightly worried that Cornwall Council will use this as a potential way to just kind of ditch the conversation because we're effectively giving them the authority to conduct a transport survey. And Cornwall Council, it could take them months, years to, to actually conduct it. I'd be interested to know how much one actually costs you and whether we should do it ourselves.
So, I, I probably didn't make it clear. My intention would be that we do the survey.
Right.
But we ask for funding from Cornwall Council to help us do that.
Yeah, okay, that's, yes. Okay, so if there are no other questions, that was a proposal? Or would you like to?
I, I, I've actually no idea what a transport audit survey would cost.
No.
I have to be honest.
Do we need to do this as a staged thing and perhaps at the moment?
So I, I would propose that we intend to conduct a transport audit.
Yeah.
And that we do some research work into the cost of doing so. And we can bring that back possibly to the next meeting to formalise it.
Yeah. I second that, so all those in favour? Yes, all right, thank you, thank you. Okay. To discuss the approach to the letting of uses and licences granted to environmental properties.
Yes, if, um, if we can concentrate on the, the list of what we have, it's just that over time different practices occur and I just felt it was worthwhile you being aware of what properties we let out and on what basis that that's happening, some for commercial operations, some for more community based activity. Um, because as each of these come around, as I said before, we, we keep on doing what we've always done. So it's for you instructors differently. So we have a number of commercial operations, um, mostly probably centred around the Wharf area, we've been discussing earlier, the ice cream kiosks and the craft units. Um, they're currently let on kind of different timelines and slightly different bases. Um, the two are very much just a straightforward high speed wins. The craft units did go through a tender process some years ago originally with a selection because they are designated as craft units, not as, once I do remember some financial broker wanted to show interest in the sort of unit to have, but the council had the intention that they'd be used for local artisans. Um, at the moment, the way that those work is that they get a first refusal. Then obviously a legal right of tenancy, but last time round we gave them first refusal on the basis that they're ongoing business. That's slightly different from what's happened in the other places. So we've got that element of the commercial things and also I suppose just to make you aware of the, um, other more social, most of them I suppose are sports type things, the croquet club, we're making some division, the cricket club. So, uh, it would really make your council have understood what the situation was and to give you the opportunity to question that or change direction if you wish.
Yes, thanks. I feel like there's obviously ones on here such as like the parking spaces, the weather station, um, that obviously want to keep ongoing, that's fine. Um, but I am really passionate about making as much as possible as publicly accessible as possible, like, as in like fair opportunity to apply for it. Doesn't matter if they're CIC, charity, like a startup or whatever. But like, and, and us like on a case per case, case basis, like being able to decide potentially between a few sorts of options. Because then that, you know, the, the council at the time then can have like, oh, maybe the town needs more commercial stuff or maybe the town needs more, like, you know, therapeutic support stuff. Um, and like, you know, we get to say that as and when they sort of come up. But at the moment, like, um, like it, it feels like we've got this sort of shape where, you know, there's certain ones that are definitely always commercial and certain ones that we've said are just community. I think we should probably, I would prefer to see that actually a bit more flexible, so that allows potentially more community stuff if we feel like we need it. Or more commercial stuff if we feel like that, that's been satisfied by whatever, basically. I don't know how to start to sort that, I'll move that forward a bit. Um, I don't, also I don't think this, uh, when I say things like the Shakerhold stuff, also including the, the croquet club. But also on here, like, we've got the cricket club as well, which has obviously had like incredibly long rent. I don't think on here is necessarily how much some of those are paying. Um, and obviously that's like a, a thing that we'd have to go to private session for, I'm guessing, um.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying about the flexibility, but I think in terms of transparency around the, um, around the kind of arrangements, my feeling is that we should actually designate each, um, each thing as something. And my feeling is that we should designate, um, things as either specialist, which seems like the car parks and the weather station and Stamford Hill and so on. Commercial, which is like the whole units that are baking the ice cream, or community. So we've, um, we've designated the kitchen pub or sport. And then I think we should say, if it's a specialist or a community thing, we should invite expressions of interest and have, say, five years maximum. If it's a sports thing, we should invite expressions of interest and have a ten year thing. And if it's commercial, we should go out to tender, so that we kind of know then. You know, and, and within that we could change it. So if something comes up, you know, bacon, we could say at that point we want to change its designation from commercial to uh, community or something like that. But at the moment, it seems a bit piecemeal, you know, depending on when everything started. So my, my feeling is that the first thing we should do is just re-designate everything. And I think that it should be one of those categories, either specialist, commercial, community or sports. And then we can, and then we could, um, have a, have a, an arrangement for each of those designations.
Yeah, yes, Kelly.
Um, I don't disagree, um, with, with what you're saying in, in the sense that I think we can today or at some near meeting, um, designate which assets we want as community assets, which ones we think of as money making assets. The only sort of caveat I would put to it is if we do designate something as commercial, in the metric for evaluating the commercial proposals, we should have, uh, lines that are not just about how much, um, money's coming into the council. So it's not just a high speed thing. Even if something's designated as commercial, if somebody comes along as a community interest company that is employing local people that can't find jobs elsewhere, that is returning percentages of profit to, to other local organisations or whatever, then we should be flexible enough to, to have that, even if it has been designated as commercial.
Okay, specific on that, I think the word you might be looking for is worth. Uh, because worth can be very different depending on people. Some people, it's money, some people, it's actually the amount of lives you've saved or something. And actually, in that respect, you can basically have that same tag, worth, like, you know, what is, what was the worth and for the community on some of the, like, more charitable than the community group ones as well, potentially, I guess, then.
Hmm, but, um, yeah. Yeah, I really, I just wanted to comment quickly, I really liked what Finn said, you know, about that sitting down and working out, you know, categories and a different thing for each category. Because I think anywhere like, you know, uh, the Wharf, places like that, if, if it's a once you're in, you're in sort of policy, very unfair to other businesses and just, yeah, you know, um, Piggie. Well, if you give them first refusal, they could technically keep staying, which is what we've got with the limits and.
On those three years.
Yeah. So once you're in, you could potentially say that.
But, yeah, I was, I was just gonna say with things like the pitch of pub, the, um, the sports facilities on the Downs, that the Downs were given to the people of you for recreation and sports things.
Yeah.
So that that has, I feel that has to be honoured.
Yes.
And kept to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think what I just want to say is kind of what you said, that, um, if we, if we have a designation for a building and then when, when it gets to the end of its designated time, it goes out to public, you know, either expressions of interest or tender, then it's, it's more equitable than, um, you know, just letting things roll through and not really people not being visible that there's any opportunities to take this and that. And absolutely, I agree with that, a tender, it doesn't have to be the most economically advantageous tender. You can have, um, tenders which bring in other, um, you know, another matrix of, of things that you want, you know, you know, work and commercial, you know, the community stuff to be part of that.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of commercial letting, five years isn't very much. Uh, there should be a right to renew built into that, um, just because as you get to five years, you just got yourself going and you get kicked out. It's not gonna be very, um, uh, yeah, a very good, really to kick someone out when they just started their business and, yeah. I think it needs to be looked at as a longer lease for commercial or a right to renew. I think that's the comparison agreement.
I bet she's been leasing for two hours.
We could take this to, uh, separately to, to be talked about on.
Right, um, don't necessarily need a whole solution today. But again, I mean, if you've got some of these dates and such, things do roll along. So in one sense, uh, I mean, the ice cream kiosk is on a very strange, I don't know why we inherited, um, term, two years, eight months. Which is, uh, it kind of cuts out, so after, in fact, it's three seasons. And then there's a gap. So actually, the current one has just ended. So we do need to do something with that to get attendance in next year. So that one at this rate, I would want to advertise a ten year's normal on a commercial base. And, and I'll, I think, I would suggest I'll do that unless the council resolve to do something different on that one. Um, there are some other ones which, you know, do soon roll around. Um, again, we, we come to these things in different ways. Um, the, the green area outside the Neetside church, which we've let to the artisan market um, for the last couple of years, started as a COVID measure. That's on an annual licence. And again, if we're not going to continue with that or do something different, we need to know sooner rather than later. I think the end of January, I think we need, we need to settle as to whether we're looking to cease that or at least go through a different protest.
Yeah.
Um, the same for the, I should, it should actually be in terms of the place rather than the people. Um, the part of the old tennis courts on, um, which last year, we, or the last couple of years, we've had the Galtic Castle operation. And again, that came about someone that made an approach to the council with, I suppose, with a proposition. Um, and again, that's another one where I know they are keen to continue that, but we need to decide how are we going to do that? Or, or how are we going to approach letting that piece of ground?
Yeah.
So they're, I think they're the more pressing ones.
Okay, Tiana? They'll start with kiosks then, specifically. This is part of the reason why I wanna try and stay as flexible as possible, because I want to see what the community puts forward. Like, um, you know, but like I said about work, right? Like, if it actually, a community group that wants to set up a, like, I, I guess something like a, a quick help centre or something there, then I would like to see that as a potential thing. Because like, you know, down that street, we've already got like two other places that are selling ice creams or whatever. Like, actually, a community group that wants to come in and set up a health centre or whatever, like an open all year round thing might be quite interesting.
At, at the moment, if you were to do it as you've done before.
Yeah.
What exactly does that, that, is that a, you know, um?
Well, again, it's, I bet it's really interesting. Uh, I mean, that, the, the kiosk is very small. I mean, it's, it's a box. So, I mean, I think you could only really, I'm not sure you'd get more, I don't think you could have a meeting or anything of people inside.
No, you can imagine there'd be like a health, like a, like a help, like a help myself kiosk or something, type of thing or something, you know.
At the moment.
Or is it specifically a commercial?
In the past, we've always just advertised it as a nice, as a kiosk, ice cream kiosk. And in fact, it has limitations because, because we also have the lock gate tea rooms next door. There's only certain things, there's a pressure what they can each sell. And everybody having an ice cream kiosk within a cafe next to it that sells ice cream and puts the other out of business. So at the moment, it's let on the basis of this is designated as an ice cream kiosk. Um, there's nothing to stop other bids being, or, or purposes being offered. Then you have the issue of people that want to pay you rental for it to be an ice cream kiosk. If there were anyone else, what they would offer you, you'd need to look at the difference. Same with the lock gate tea rooms. In the tea room, um, you know, you could choose to do something else with that. But you can forego the commercial income that, you know, it gives us. That is a choice, um, you know, place that quite yet. See, yes, you do have that and you could do that, you don't have to cite anything upfront today or recently. Now, but certainly there are, say, there are issues which are up and coming though, that we do need direction.
I think the whole thing is a very big, big conversation that we need to have. But if we can pin down the pressing ones for you, that would be good. So.
So first of all, probably propose that we call it something, not just ice cream kiosk, we just call it a small kiosk or something. Like, so that would stay ambiguous to, that, so if we do put out a tender or something, that, you know, we, it would at least open people's ability, like imagination to what that could be applied for, right? So it's probably the first.
In terms of a commercial let, yes, I mean, as long as people, you know, have references and such, it's the high speed wins because that's the purpose it's given to.
Yeah, okay.
And clearly, if the council resolves to change its use, um, then, and, and have a different matrix of worth, um, you'd have to consider that, but, um, to be perfectly honest, I, I would suggest that the ice cream kiosk is probably the least desirable or usable for anything other than its purpose.
Call it something different, like you said, at least for now, because, um, even if you leave it exactly as it is and it's just called small kiosk, then you might get a big, big, bigger range of commercials that might be applying for it.
Okay, so do you intend to keep the same, but, but call it?
On this very short thing right now, yeah. Just don't call it an ice cream kiosk.
If you wish to resolve to call it something else, you can use that domain, that's a.
But you have to make it explicit that it's restricted to not selling things that the lock gates are selling.
I guess.
Uh, the, well, I would, I would suggest that, yes. Because, yes, if you, if you, again, if, if you let it, if you let it out as a tea.
Yeah.
Shop or a tea, takeaway tea unit, we are letting next doors of it something and.
It could be in the details of the process that we go through, the tender or the application. Like, there's gonna be things like health and safety and all sorts as well, isn't there? Like, we probably don't want diesel generators coming out from it straight all over the wharf or whatever. So, yeah, like, um, so I guess, like, I propose that we just call it the Wharf Kiosk. That we rename it the Wharf Kiosk. And that it continues on its current process that we've got in place right now for that one specific one. That's the one that is getting. process that we've got in place right now for that one specific one, if that's the one that is getting signed today.
Okay, so that's your proposal, just wanna take a comment from Peter and then be whether anyone seconded it.
I don't wanna, oh, I've seen what you said, Katie, but the Wharf Kiosk is one very small property and a whole number of properties that are underneath this umbrella that we're talking about. So, so I think making a decision on an individual one would be incautious, if I'm honest. The, the other thing that I do wanna say is I would advise extreme caution with changing anything at this point in time that's going on in that Wharf commercial area, because sensitivities are very high amongst all the traders that are operating there. Um, and I have to say, at the moment, there is some sort of, what do you call it, Mexican standoff? Where, where everybody is happy to be unhappy with what each other is doing, and there, there is some form of balance there, right? But getting, making decisions tonight on one of the businesses would be absolutely the wrong thing to do, or frankly. I think what we need to do is to give some sort of steerage to the town clerk as to how he should, um, lay out his options, there's one, two and three. And Philip has said about categorising them, I, I get the principle, but in my mind, I think you'd need a category for every single different premises that we, that we offer. Like, for instance, the craft units, um, at the moment, you said it's, they're renewed on a first refusal basis. And reading what Alex was saying, if you're setting up a small business, you've got to have some sense of continuity in order to plan your business to go ahead in years to come, so I think as long as those tenants are operating within how we want them to operate, let's say, a little craft business, making things and perhaps selling them and other crafts coming in, if they wish to renew, it seems fine to me. That's three small units. Everything else, I think, goes out to tender pretty much, doesn't it? So it's not like an automatic right of renewal for anyone.
At the moment, um, the other, well, to be honest, it's the ice cream kiosk and the tea rooms which go out to tender on a different term, or, you know, different cycles. Um, I think most of the sports things are tied up into, are tied up into longer term things.
Yeah.
I think that there's a bit of an oddity about how some of the licences over the usage works. So, uh, other oddities, I suppose, are the, the markets and the bouncy castles, as to how we, are we either happy with having operators, again, to an extent have arguably established businesses or established ways of doing things in terms of operating, or whether, at what point do we say, is there anyone else and are you prepared to pay us any more? I mean, so in that sense, it's commercial.
So I, I think trying to bottom out those differences tonight is gonna be almost impossible. Uh, and I'd suggest we probably need to pick one of these options, but then to come back with some sort of, put it into our work stream, to have a group of us councils get together, look at all of our properties and agree a, a management process. Um, I mean, I think, um, would you be happy with that as a proposal? Or would you prefer us to select one of these options?
No, I'm, no, I'm okay, I mean, to be honest, I was rather hoping the site would have dealt with this, and they, they, they'd give you a player as it were, be that it was something more appropriate for all councils to talk about. Um, but again, I appreciate it is quite a, you know, complex and working through a different case scenario, as it were, to get there. So it's a difficult thing to do at full council.
Yes, Fetha?
I, I'd be, I'd be happy to take it back to oversight if, if that's what full council decided, but we, when we discussed it at oversight, we felt that one of the things that we, that full council should do is designate each of these areas, each of these letting opportunities as something, so to give the, to give the staff some clarity about what kind of letting arrangement should be in place for each of them. And, you know, that's the paper that's come out, asking us to give it some clarity, and that's the discussion we're having. So if, if the real discussion that we wanted to have was, shall we continue with the ice cream kiosk, the Wharf kiosk? That probably should, is what should have been on the agenda really, isn't it?
If the only really pressing case is the ice cream kiosk, sorry, Wharf kiosk, then would it be possible tonight to sort of say, we're gonna designate that as a commercial corporation and allow, um, Keith, et cetera, to do what is on the site and to try and draw in the most revenue for that? And then go through with the finality to come the other, um, perhaps more contentious, um, and also less pressing leases?
Yeah. My feeling after listening to everybody was to allow that kiosk to carry on as is for Keith and meet up and have a proper full discussion about the rest of it, however we might authorise it or whatever we're gonna do, but I feel like it's such a big conversation. Possibly, yes, Katie?
Um, I still feel really strongly about actually renaming it, I just really wanna see a range of opportunities and not just ice cream there. Um, I think it's, like, saying that, you know, the unease between current businesses, et cetera, is a happy unease or whatever, I don't feel like, you know, that's a discussion we need to have with those businesses, and we can go away and do that. Like, I think, you know, if it's part of the actual, we can put into the details of the document what we're after, if we're after something specific, or we can put in exclusions, like if we're after things that are not certain things. That's the details of the document, that, but literally changing the name would make it much more accessible and potentially more interesting.
Okay, so.
That's all, that, that's literally all on that time, yeah.
That's fine, so you've made a proposal, so it's up to the room whether somebody wants to second it, and then we'll go to a vote on that proposal. So your proposal was to just drop the ice cream part, basically, when it's going up to tender?
Well, the name of the ice cream on it, and you can say in the tender it was traditionally used in ice cream kiosk or whatever, or we would prefer an ice cream kiosk. I'm saying right now, literal name, get rid of the term ice cream out of it, you shouldn't be defining the function of a building with the name in it.
Okay, so yeah, so all those in favour, dropping the term ice cream out of kiosk title when it goes back out to tender, so all those in favour?
Right, Fetha?
Okay, all those against? And abstain?
That's fourteen.
Of course, of course, that's, you said that.
Yes, okay, um, and that, yeah, I was trying, what was really?
I, I don't think that gives the town clerk what he's after, I'm quite honest. Right, okay. Um, can I propose option three plus, uh, dare I say, put a working group into our work programme to look at every individual property and come up with a management strategy for each one?
Option three?
But I'm reasoning, I'm happy to amend it to one, two or three, either of them seem okay to me. I don't know if there is a preference from.
Um, I probably wouldn't, even where we're at, I wouldn't maybe stress on the options. I think, I think in terms of you've, um, got a, you've got a way forward in terms of the management strategy, I think we have to go away and build that up on what's been said tonight in the commercialisation.
Okay. Fetha?
Yeah, but I, seeing you've already had a working group, could, could I change it to say that full council delegated the site to come back with a proposal, to do the discussion and come back with a proposal?
It doesn't matter who does it, as long as it does.
It's just another working group, it's.
I know, I know, we've got enough, they've worked very well.
That's great.
I'll, I'll withdraw that.
So, was that proposal to?
To delegate the oversight committee with a
A discussion on?
With a discussion on how to categorise these and how to regularise the, the leasing and licensing arrangements.
Come back with a proposal, full council for how we should be going along. Yeah, all those in favour?
To me?
At least we've got something.
To consider a recommendation from the Environment and Climate Change Forum that B S T C commissions a local landscape assessment to assist our decision-making process around reviewing the M D P and/or to provide evidence for the current plan. From what I gather, Cornwall Council recommends this is, this is done regardless, because excluding the right best of it.
Yes, yeah, that, um, that's, um, if it's all right to say. Um, so this is, this is really about deciding whether we want to review our neighbourhood development plan. Um, there's a lot of reasons why we might want to review the neighbourhood development plan, and a lot of reasons why we might not want to do that, because it is quite complex and a time-consuming process. Um, however, one aspect which we may want to do anyway is to have a look at, uh, all of the elements and features which currently create our landscape in effect, um, see, you know, the ones that we value what gives the stratus distinctive local character, and then, um, create a landscape assessment about those. So, an example is the one that they've recently done in Port Riffe, where they've categorised all of the areas of the town and the surrounding as either coastal areas, um, woodland areas and so and so forth, and they've, uh, identified any distinct features of all of those different categories. The idea being that, um, once you've categorised and you've found distinctive aspects to the area, you had, then have a kind of legal reason why you potentially don't build on it. That's, that's, that's what we're aiming for here, either areas that you can build on or areas that you can't build on. And our current neighbourhood development plan has got seven areas which are indicated as not for development at the moment, which are Mayor Down, Sunleys Downs, Bude Golf Course, Bude Valley and Canal, Effer Down, Bude Football Club and Bude Rugby Club. So those are the seven kind of pieces of land that are currently identified in the neighbourhood development plan, that's not for development, unfortunately. As we know, the golf course has been developed of late, but, you know, generally, we're, we're trying to stop development on those. My feeling is, and I think the feeling of the Environment and Climate Change Committee, is that those seven areas don't represent all of the areas in Bude that we might want to protect from development. So, the recommendation from the forum and the recommendation from Cornwall Council is that we, um, we do one of these, I call it, landscape assessments, and then we see either that landscape assessment argues for us changing the neighbourhood development plan because it's so distinctively different from our current plan, or it just supports our current neighbourhood development plan. And it's, you know, comes into the reason why we may or may not want to review it.
Yeah.
But that is very clearly expressed in that sort of.
Yeah.
Okay.
In all honesty, I don't know how much any of these costs either. So that's, yeah, so that is at this point, I think, a request to just research the costs and, um, the vulnerabilities and.
So, propose to research the cost?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, unless we want to put some kind of maximum on it, but in all honesty, I, I haven't got any sense of how much it would be. I mean, as I said, I know Port Riffe did one.
Yeah.
And they're a fairly small town, so it can't be like hundreds of thousands, but, you know, it could be five thousand or ten thousand, I don't know.
Okay, so the proposal is to definitely, sort of, to research the cost and vote?
We have got, we have got, um, a pot in our reserves which is for the neighbourhood development plan, which potentially this, this could come out of, so it might be another thing where if we find the cost reasonable, um, then we'd ask oversight to manage it from reserves, I don't know.
Yes, that's, um, about sixteen thousand pounds is the pot for neighbourhood development plan.
Right.
Let's hope it's not that.
Okay, so proposal was to initially do the research and to evaluate that, of course, and bring that back, the information back to us?
With no commitment to actually proceed.
I'll send in that. All those in favour? Thank you. Okay, to agree that the council establish and fund a cycle to work scheme, I think you'd be interested to give us that.
I would. Um, the idea of having a cycle to work scheme was raised by both councils, I think, and staff. Um, and there's a paper here explaining the, uh, cycle scheme, cycle scheme, which is the UK's most popular cycle scheme, uh, cycle to work. And I'll pedal quite quickly through it for you. Did you, you probably still have a chance to read. Um, so, uh, there's information here from the employer, how it works is the employer registers with the scheme and then they, um, send out promotional material to their staff. Um, the employee, knowing about skiing, visits a local bike shop or searches online for, um, things they might want to buy, and they can purchase a cycle and equipment, or equipment. Um, the employee then receives the bike and accessories and starts repaying for that adequate salary with the employer having purchased the bike. After twelve months, the employer will have recovered its costs and generated up to thirteen point eight per cent in savings. Those savings come through national insurance contributions, it's quite complicated, um, but that's how the savings for the employer are generated. The employees then give them various ownership options. In order to register with the scheme, um, the employer has to pay like the O Y E, which the town council does, has to register with the cycle scheme through a member of staff who is, um, authorised to do so, um, and be able to afford, a key point, be able to afford the employee's bikes and the accessories. Um, employees, employers save fifteen per cent on the cost of the bikes by joining the scheme, and for every thousand pound spent, um, the employer can recoup up to a hundred and fifty pounds, again, I think that's through the national insurance contributions. Um, employees save between twenty-six and forty per cent on the cost of the bikes and the accessories. Uh, what's in it for the employee, um, it's said they can buy a bike and accessories, just a bike with just the accessories. Then it saves by, uh, employer purchasing the bike on their behalf. Um, there's no credit checks on the employees wishing to enter the scheme, and of the, um, shops that, that allow employees to purchase from them, Ride It In Town is one of the registered, um, outlets with the cycle scheme, which is helping. Uh, but you can buy one bike as well, there is an ownership fee which must be paid at the end of the hire period. The employee wishes to keep the bike at the end of the hire period, the fee enables them to do so whilst avoiding any benefit in kind liabilities. And I look to keep, there's a tax, I thought it might be, okay. Um, there's three ownership options, own it later, there's a deposit pay, you can make upfront, the equipment is used for three years, the deposit is retained and ownership transferred to the employee, or the deposit is due to be funded if the employee does wish to keep the equipment. There's two other, um, own it or own, ownership, um, options. Um, the way that the, uh, employee saves on this is the way that the bike is paid for, the, the employee gets the monthly gross pay, the bike is, the bike payment is taken, then income tax is taken from, um, the pay, and then they get the taken pay. So that is how they're saving, because they're paying less tax. Just a couple of environmental benefits, for instance, if I was to cycle, be four miles, um, every member of staff exchanging car for a bike to make total daily commute of four miles, that'd be saving seventy-one kilograms of CO2 emissions per year, or equivalent to three trees. Um, and in terms of health, that's nine hundred and thirty-four calories, or me having two less burgers. So, um, the proposal is that the town council signs up to the seat.
Sure. I suppose we do that, it sounds amazing, thank you for the welcome back, that's crack on, that's great.
I've got a question actually.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, this is just for council employees, right? Yeah, okay.
Katie?
Um, would it also, um, include the, um, more like temporary staff and things like that that we have, like, um, yeah, yeah, not O Y E, but, I mean, they are O Y E, but it is, so. And then the other thing would be, does it include e-bikes? Okay, because obviously naturally here, yeah?
Any other questions, Karen?
Is there an option to designate the physical shopping Bude and take the online purchase out of the equation? Or does it have to be that exacting?
I can look at that for you, I, I suspect probably not, because they, they may want to maximise the places from which people could buy, but.
could buy, but I would as well.
So, we had a proposal.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah. So, all those in favour? Thank you, thank you. Okay. To agree the proposed amendments to the operation of the grants policy. Just a few tweaks in here.
Do you want to do something or do you have?
Yes, good, that's all right, yeah, happy to.
Just got to pick up now. So, this was a group who, we discussed at the oversight committee and then we took it away to another round and looked at it, and I suppose what we're trying to do is to incorporate some of the lessons that we feel were learned from the first round of the grants process, all of which, all the principles, I think, are fine and good, but I think some of the processes could probably have been a little bit clearer, including things like eligibility and so on. So, we put some proposed changes in the grant policy, those are in red, really just to try and make sure that, first of all, we don't get huge grant applications, so be clear how much the full pot is, but there's other ways of getting support, making sure that people know that they must demonstrate local benefit, that if they're a private organisation, they need to indicate what public benefit is going to occur from the grant, that we want to know if we've already given them a grant or some granting kind, why we need to, you know, why there's another need for funding. If they're affiliated to a regional or national organisation, you would want them to explore funding from there, although that doesn't mean that they can't get funding from us. And then in terms of the process, what the suggestion is, is that after all the grants applications have come in, is that we give the people who apply for grants the opportunity to have a meeting with councillors which isn't a public meeting, so that applicants, kind of one at a time, can answer any questions that we have, where we can be a little bit more searching perhaps about things that don't appear completely obvious in the application, but not doing that in the sort of full glare of publicity, but not suggesting that that meeting is a decision-making meeting, because once we've got the clarifications, then we do have a public meeting where we make final decisions. We were also asked by one of the organisations who gave a grant, who asked time if they could change the reason that they were using the grant and could change, and we realised that there wasn't anything in the policy that enabled us to either agree or not agree that. So, the proposal is that we put in the policy that people can change the reason, but there will be a process to go through, and the process we're suggesting is that the mayor and town clerk review the request, and if they feel it's, you know, acceptable within kind of reasonable limits that they agree it, and if they feel it may, you know, breach the terms or whatever, that they bring it back to full council. And the other thing we've done is just put some diaprams and things in the grant policy to try and make the process a little bit clearer, so dates and checklists and that kind of thing, so those are just kind of cons things. So, that's the changes to the policy. The paper is suggesting that we have the first meeting, the sort of private meeting on Thursday, the 19th of January, and then the public meeting where we make the decisions on Thursday, the 26th of January. We've also felt that it might be worthwhile producing a scoring matrix, which councillors could either use or not use, but it might help us give some consistency to how the scoring goes.
That was tough last time. So, yeah.
And really, it's just about trying to remind councillors about what the criteria is, things like it needs to have local value and it needs to, you know, if it's a private company, it needs to have public benefit, those kind of things. And then also, when we're talking about the cons for the grant allocations, it would be useful if we could encourage the organisations that we've already given grants to, to give some publicity to that and allow us to publicise that in this round, so that people understand the kind of organisations we've funded before, as we've got that little bit of history. So, those are five things, the amended grants policy, a proposal to allow applicants to change their expenditure, two meetings in January, an optional scoring matrix and cons about the scheme.
Any questions for Phil?
The only thing, the only question that I had, which I'm sure you've thought about, is whether or not, say you've got a group of five councillors talking privately to the group, to the applicants, there has to be some kind of translation of what that's found out, so that you don't end up going over the same thing twice. I guess the scoring matrix does that, but it would just be to sort of, so potentially the leader of that meeting could then say, well, we've actually gone through this and we feel this, this and this about the application, and actually lead that discussion, because otherwise you're going to have the same meeting twice.
I don't think that, I don't think in the private meeting we were thinking that there would be a kind of, how worthy is the application? It would be more like, you don't understand, you know, what do you mean when you say you want to buy sports equipment? What sports equipment you want to buy?
So, it's to clarify the application.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes, I had a question about some of those applied before, I would have loved to have been able to.
I mean, some of the applications were very detailed, weren't they? And others were basically a sentence, so it's quite difficult to put them out.
Okay. Any other questions for Phil?
Yes? Sean?
I have a question, I just really want to say thank you for everyone that worked on like finessing this, because like, it was a great start last time, but I feel like these changes that you've proposed will make it much tighter and, yeah, I just, I, you know, so we accept the recommendations of all because what you've presented is really, like, really honest, and I'm excited about that with all of the additional changes and it being a more comfortable process for everyone involved and more transparent and, yeah.
Yeah.
I second that. I probably also wanted to still keep around the grants policy working group though, because I think there is probably some new work that's going to end up coming around, which is about how can we further support groups but without giving them the money, basically.
Okay. So, all those in favour?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. To delegate town clerk to agree and sign the heads of terms with, how do you say it? The location of the charging points.
Basically, this is our procedural, we've already agreed, resolved, that we will negotiate, as it were, a change, change the position with the company we already have the contract with. So, I wasn't quite sure how to word this, because in a sense, I've given you the current state of play with the heads of terms. If we were 100% there and could just agree that that's the end term, I wasn't sure if there'd be more questions and issues, so it's given you a little bit of room to take on, build in further comments tonight or subsequently, but we do need to get to a position where we agree with them, so they can then do the actual commission, the investigation work to get the new payables in, et cetera.
Katie?
So, I obviously am still quite concerned, because I think there's a few sort of little elements I don't feel like I've really covered, as I briefly mentioned in the email, like things like updating, upgrading, you know, 15 years is a long time for any piece of technology, like five years is a long time for any piece of technology, and I wouldn't want us to necessarily burden the space of using that same old tech in 15 years if no one's got that type of charger anymore, or if like.
That's, that's a point I would look at, get that closely, but fundamentally, it's in the company's interest to have something which is useful.
If there's not a round.
Well, if there's not a round, then it will fall anyway. But, but no, I will check in terms of, but fundamentally, it's not, we're not paying for these, as it were, we're not paying installation or to rent them in that sense, it's their risk, but they need to keep them working, otherwise they're making.
We're losing out on the space though, aren't we? Like, the charging for the space, so we are sort of paying for it by giving them that opportunity, by the loss of revenue.
No, fundamentally, well, we've got two routes on that, but my first point, my first route is how it's done over in the Cornwall car park, is that people still pay for the space.
Yeah.
Because remember, again, especially on the fast charging, they don't want people sat there all day in their space, they need to actually, so even if someone was coming here for a, for the day, say, they would have to boot their car up once it was charged. And I know there's technology within the units that can manage that, effectively, they would get an extra charge, as it were, from the car charger if they didn't move, but one looking at is that we still require people to pay parking. We are, we'd still be hosting the co-cars.
Yeah.
So, we have lost some revenue through that, removing them from the free spaces to the paid spaces, but that doesn't work any other way.
Does that mean that people can only charge if a go-car isn't there? Because we've got two chargers there proposing. No?
No, there's.
You said that.
Yeah.
There would be spare, there would be slot, right? It says.
There's two chargers for the co-cars, and then there's, is it two others?
Okay, cool. All right, so there will be two spare.
Yes, 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 I mean, again, that's where, that's where their investment in the co-car ones is tied in with providing other ones for the public. Yes.
I've got more to add if no one else has. So, I've got more to add if no one else has. The other thing was that I was concerned about was obviously the amount of labelling or signage, especially with the trend towards basically petrol forecourt-style screens where you have on the outside of your car park, you show how much electric is going to be and things like that. So, obviously, I'm guessing there will be a conversation, but I don't know how much room we've got to make sure we dictate how big those screens are or, you know, signage, how big it's going to be and things like that.
We haven't got down to the detailed actuals, but we're working on the basis of we have sign off and their signage.
Okay, all right.
And we might have put that in here, because yes, they would obviously then get cut large.
Yeah.
Because it's our property, so we obviously need control.
Do you have any idea about the big grey box in front of the, yeah, and where that might be for anything or?
I don't think it could be a size, and the intention, the current thinking is down the very far end in that, in the grass area, the very far end of the car park. It's not, near where the plantar is, it's not a huge space, but that's what they're saying, it will fit in.
I guess it would physically fit. Yeah.
Again, I suppose until they get their actual survey with Western Power.
I guess I'm just thinking more plan commission, because they're normally quite big grey blocks. I mean, if everyone's seen the one at the Esso Garage, basically, I mean, those obviously have got to be a bit bigger than what we would have, but they're still quite hefty potentially. Yeah. It would have been good to know that before signing, you know, anything really, but that would just be my preference instead of that, it can't be the case. Just in case it ends up having to be literally outside this window or has to be on the top of the hill or something like that, you know.
Well, the only place we're talking about is that end of the car park and the grass face next to it. So, that's kind of our commitment. If they wanted to put something on shoulder hill or something, that's not currently, we 're not agreeing to that within this heads of terms. This heads of terms actually is their next step, if they then go away and do the natural commission, the research.
Yeah.
So, again, if they come back with something fundamentally different, we'll be having another conversation about that, as to whether that is achievable.
The other thing was about exclusivity, and I have realised that it does seem to be only about a year, which isn't, I mean, by the time we've had other people come in, potential ideas and stuff, that's not a very long time, so I'm happy with exclusivity only being a year, basically. It doesn't stop us from exploring our own avenues, because like I said, the in-hot thing will be, you won't have petrol charging, like, you won't have the Esso Garage anymore, basically, you are having destination charges. So, somewhere that's a hot destination to be, like here, is the places that people are going to want to charge, so.
So, if there aren't any questions or anything, I would propose, oh, yeah, did you want one, Sean?
No, I just want to propose that we delegate the town clerk to agree and sign the heads of terms.
Yeah.
So, all those in favour?
Thank you. And all Friday's ceiling of the licence with Cornwall Council for works to be undertaken at campus.
This is, this is the end of, yeah, the beginning and the end, or the end and the beginning. That's the full pack. So, I'm afraid when people say why do we need to take time, that's part of the reason, but fundamentally, this is the licence which is necessary for Cornwall Council to give us the permissions to actually undertake the work, and Cornwall Council require that as a contract to be made under still, so I suppose how seriously they take that, it's not just a, if you can get someone to do it, and the background behind that is, you know, the whole methods of working and timings and health and safety and everything, you know, is included in the paperwork that supports that licence. I suppose we have to do that. Before it falls off the ground.
Okay. All those in favour then, please? Thank you very much. Any key issues from the councillors?
I guess the only question I've got to raise was the, how are we now with the town team agreement with Cornwall Council, so from the economic development point of view, because, like, with the grant money that we're supposedly having, because it'd be great to have that update, basically. That's why I was looking at you.
I can tell you very quickly, so a document has been submitted to Cornwall Council for the release of the money, it's a request of slightly more information than I provided them, has been made, which will be submitted next week.
So, hopefully, once we've got that money, then we should start to be able to basically hire some consultants, so hopefully around the corner, really.
In hand.
Yes.
Okay, throughout and the others, I'm going to move on to the financial report for approval. So, first of all, the scheduled payments made between the 8th of November and the 1st of December. The proposal approved those. Is that enough? Okay. All those in favour? And all those against? And the scheduled payments to be made on the 2nd of December. The proposal approved those. Is that enough? Okay. All those in favour? And the blows against? Yes.
Does it add, it would be great to have a bit of a, I guess, an ongoing list of tech, which is like a white list of technology that can be brought, like, for example, where town, we brought that. which is like a white, white list of technology that can be brought, like, for example, where a camera abroad, that's fourteen pounds. I know it's basically going to be a throwaway thing that's not going to be of any quality whatsoever. You can be, do, do better by literally linking up your phone. So like, I don't know, because obviously, like, it's very hard for potentially some people to find out that information. I just don't know how to share that information, unless I don't just get piecemeal stuff come through, if that makes sense? Like a guide, I don't know. I guess that's a group policy thing, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so that is something we're going to look at in the business.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so consider passing the following resolution that in relation to the remaining items on the agenda, publicity would be prejudiced to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be transacted and the press and public are instructed to withdraw. The final answer, confidential meeting will proceed in closed session. All those in favour?
You need to keep going, I'm afraid, because I, because I have not seen.
Oh, sorry. Four?
No, 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 no.
Against?
Yeah. Sorry to know. Against? Against, sorry, what was that, one?
Yeah.
And I'll say. So we will proceed in closed session.